Okay, good morning, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioner meeting. It's Monday, October 19th, 2020. Time is 9:05. We'll call the meeting to order. I'll just start out by saying, James, it's good to see you. I know you and your wife have had it kind of rough lately and we're just glad you're on the call with us.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Can you call the roll for the record, please?
Ms. Reagan.
President.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, October 5th, 2020 meeting?
So move.
Second.
A motion to approve the minutes in a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. All right, under Presentations to the Commissioners, we have Jamie Bane, Director of the Health Department. Jamie?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Want to give you a brief update on our current status of COVID-19 in the community. Also, a few other little things to touch on, but numbers so far, we'll see another update later today, but as of yesterday's numbers, we are at 2,771 cases in Delaware County. That's up actually 162 cases since last week's report. We're also up to 73 deaths now. That's an additional two deaths since last week's report. Hospitalization numbers, I'm waiting on another update for today, but as of yesterday, our hospitalization numbers were down a significant amount, but not really promising at this point based on this increase in overall cases. I think we went from a high of 57 down to around 45 cases hospitalized. Again, it's promising on the surface, but we need to wait and see how this plays out with these continuing increases in cases overall. An interesting note, Ball State accounted for a high number of cases there for a while when we saw this recent, more recent spike. Over the last couple of weeks, the Ball State numbers are not what we're seeing that are causing this big increase that we're seeing right now. They're not, I mean, they are, Ball State students are still a concern because they're still potentially a vector, but they are not the major contributor to these increasing numbers and they are not contributing to the hospitalizations at all. I know Commissioner Reagan had some concerns over what she's been seeing in the community when it comes to mask use, a lack of mask use, but just as importantly improper mask use. So I want to touch on that. The use of a mask, when you're not going to cover your nose with it as well, is, it's almost the same as not wearing a mask. The nose is going to be as important, if not more important than the mouth, as a route of transmission of this virus. So we would encourage people to continue to wear their masks, wear them up over their nose, try to create as much of a seal or form fit as they can with their mask. That's going to be the best use of that protection. A couple of other things that we haven't really touched on in the past, it's personally been on my radar for months, but I've been waiting on data to support it before bringing it, you know, making it publicly mentioned, and that's the use of vitamin D3 as a supplement. It's still not to the point where we can make this a formal recommendation, but there has been a number of studies that have come out recently that have shown a correlation between an individual's vitamin D3 levels and the severity of the illness that they experienced. So it's not a preventative, it's not going to prevent you from getting sick, but for example, I think Boston University put out a study showing that individuals that were experiencing the higher severity of symptoms were also found to have lower levels of vitamin D3 in their body and vice versa. So at best, I think what I'd recommend is people speak to their primary care physician, see what they think about that. Supplementation of vitamin D3 is relatively benign, it's not something that's too controversial. So we would recommend that. And the other thing is, we see a number of complaints come in, we see repeat complaints, and there's a, there's a theme where people are putting themselves into situations and then they're complaining about it after the fact. Now, that's frustrating on our part because if you're so concerned with what you're seeing and what you're experiencing, the first step you need to do is remove yourself from that situation and not get back into it. So when we see repeat complaints of people shopping at the same store and constantly frustrated that other patrons are not wearing masks, the first thing I need to tell you is, please, remove yourself from that situation, shop somewhere else. Let your wallet do the talking. Make it known to management that their lack of enforcement of mask use is going to cause them to lose customers and then actually back that up by shopping elsewhere. There's a, there's a level of accountability that we all have to step up and take responsibility for our own health, and that includes other, other types of our health. You know, we're all focused on this disease transmission and this virus, but worldwide, what we're seeing is people who experience the higher severity of illness especially and definitely death are people with underlying conditions. A lot of those underlying conditions are things that we can control ourselves. So eating healthy, eating right, exercising, those all add up to a healthier body that can weather the storm of this virus a little bit better. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Jamie, you want to hit on, you and I discussed trick or treating, you put some information out about that, we'll hit on that real quick, just a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been happy to work with your office and EMA and the Office of Information Services, try to push some information to the public about what are technically pretty standard recommendations for Halloween. I just think it's a little more important that people take it seriously this year. So, for example, we're asking people not do one of the traditional things you see at Halloween, which is the huge bowl of candy where you just let people reach in and take what they want. We're trying to stress that people individually hand out pieces of candy to the children, wear masks when doing so, wear gloves if you see fit while doing so. We're asking that people that are taking part and handing out candy stay out on the porch or at least be watching for visitors to minimize doorbell contact, knocking on the door. We worked with Kyle over at EMA and Information Services to put together a couple of signs that we're recommending people put out for use, and the purpose of that is to truly declare your home one way or another, whether you're participating or not. So if you're not participating, make it known to people so that they're not coming up to your house. Kyle put together a nice sign using kind of a red and green theme and messaging on them that lets people know that you're welcome to trick or treat here or you're not. We are recommending people stay away from Halloween parties at this time with this increase in cases, and especially this increase in cases is not occurring among a population that we can just assume we're safe from. It's not nursing home, it's not Ball State. The increase in cases are normal people. They tend to be a higher age range, I believe, the ones that are seeing hospitalization at least, or severe symptoms. But I think staying away from Halloween parties and things like that would be important this year.
Thank you. Does any of the other Commissioners have anything for Jamie?
I don't.
Appreciate giving us some updates, good and the bad news. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Kyle, could you share with the public how they can download and print one of those signs, please?
Yeah, sure. We, we posted those along with the PSA video that we did last week on our county Facebook page, and you can also download it from the county website as well, and we'll continue to kind of repost those as we're leading up to Halloween.
Thank you for your work on that, Kyle.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there anything else for the Health Department or from the Health Department? Okay, we'll go on to the jail construction update. Pete Peterson.
Morning, Commissioners. Certainly appreciate you having us here this morning. I also have Mike Petrusius who's on the phone as well. Mike's obviously the superintendent on the job site. Last Thursday, Dustin Frye sent out an update for you guys to review, so you should have received most of that. I can happily go through that now if you'd like, and/or I can kind of just give you some highlights.
Highlights are fine.
Okay, so as we kind of move through this, we're still scheduled, you know, to be on track for substantial completion on or around November 15th. I think that's all good. I think that was well within the plan of what we originally set out to, so good job by everybody involved. I do have some move proposals, which I'd like to share with you here in just a second, so you guys can all see those proposals that came back in, and we can review that here quickly. Again, I'll remind you, this is something that the county is on the county's, you know, side, if you will. We were just asked to try to facilitate that. So additionally, on the financial update, and I can bring up this as well in a second, I think we have a current remaining balance of $17,351 in the FFNE allowance. I'll go through that here in a second as well. So if I can figure out how to share my screen, I'm going to try to share a screen here with hopefully something. Bear with me. I'm not really sure that shared.
No, we're not seeing it, Pete.
Okay, see if I can't try to get something here quickly. Why it's not sharing, gentlemen? That's odd.
Pete, you should, Mark, you should be able to just open the doc and then select the sharing option, and it'll give you a little thumbnails of which thing you want to share that's on your desktop.
We go share. Let's try this again, let's see if I can get this on here now. Let me go to files. Mark, I'm wondering if I send this to you? If you could open them.
I sure can try.
With me here, I'm almost there. I apologize, everyone. I had that worked out. Okay, Mark, I just forwarded you two files. The first of which is the move, which I'd like to show to the Commissioners.
Okay, I just got it once, it says, okay, you want the move one first?
Yes, please.
All right, just a second.
Okay, so now I think everyone can see the move RFP response, which we've gotten. And again, I want to remind everybody, it talks about this in detail, we could share this with you, and I think you've seen this on the report that Dustin had sent out last Thursday. We have four respondents to the bids. The low bid was Three Rivers, as you can see, at 134, 541. And again, this does not include IT equipment, so, and it does include everything else that we had put out in the, in the bid document. These costs are county costs, so you're going to have to let us know how and which person you guys would like to move forward with. We can facilitate that and/or you guys can facilitate it. I think that's entirely up to you at this point in time. So if there is any questions, I will try to help answer those now.
Could we get, could you send us copies of those that come back in?
Yeah, you mean the actual bids? Yes, I will get those and package those up and put those in an email to all you folks.
Okay, that'd be good. Won't you let us take a look at all of them? We'll have John go through them also, and then we'll try to, try to make a good decision on that.
I will have those to you later today. And then, Mark, if you could bring up that second document now? This is essentially what the FFNE allowance log is. I think you can move down through these items, you know, kind of let you know exactly where you stand. I mean, right now, in the green remaining balance is what you have right now. So we are right there with everything. Everything's accounted for and paid for, and, you know, we did have a good solid pickup in the interest earned over the project sitting here at $603,000 plus dollars, which certainly helped out the project immensely as it relates to those financial needs. So currently, you have a balance of 17,351.95. I believe everything is accounted for. The only other item that's still left out there, obviously, is the completion payment, which is down below that number, which you guys were fully aware of as well on the front end of the contract. The, if we continue forward and there still isn't that balance, our idea, and John, we can work through this with you, is that we would just net out those two numbers.
All right, let's work, well, we can work through that.
Right. So now I've got Mike on the phone for any specific questions as it relates to the actual project. And I know Sherri, you had a couple for us as well on an email, but I wanted Mike here to do that since he's the one who's been living with this project daily for the last months.
Morning.
Morning.
Do you want to start with any questions you have?
Well, I'm, I'm still working on that light that's facing south, so.
Sherri, I'm going to try and do, the part of the problem is it's 25 feet tall and light diffuses off in a straight line. I'm going to try and put a six inch shroud on the side of it. I can't really do much more than that because it's not really structurally viable to attach anything heavier than that to the material that makes up the encasement of the light.
Right.
I'm waiting for a, I'm waiting for a bucket truck to be made available to do that. And, and I don't know that it's going to cure the problem. I mean, this is, it's a security issue.
Right.
So you have to have those lights back there for the, for the police to make sure that they can see what they're doing and that they're operating in a safe manner. Beyond that, I can't really tell you if it's going to make those folks happy or be what they want.
Well, we can try, and I appreciate you giving it, probably try there. But when are the other lights?
Put on, but.
Sherri, did you have another question?
When, when are the other lights going up?
Well, all the lights are up, some of them have got taken out and are being hooked back up. There's two parking lot lights that go in the back where the judge's parking area, those two are not up yet.
But are we getting any new lights on the south side by the pond?
The only missing light out there is the one that's going to be installed by the air handling unit. There are no lights at the outskirts of that area. Is that your question?
Yes.
Yeah, there's nothing slated to go along that trail, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, does anyone have any, James, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
It's looking good out there, I don't have anything either.
Yeah, again.
The seeding is all done, plantings are done. We're working through some data adds that were, that came late in the project, but as said before, we still anticipate being on time at the 15th.
Very good.
Thank you.
And if there's any other times you guys want us before the Commissioners' meeting, Shannon, please let us know, we're happy to be here.
Absolutely, I appreciate it, Pete. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
I am going to leave the meeting. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll leave as well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go to contracts and agreements for approval, the interlocal agreement with City of Muncie for Riggin Road paving.
This was an agreement that Angie Moore and Bob Jesse reached out. They've been working with the city street department, and they've come up with a plan to help pave Riggin Road from Waldau, I think, to Old Three, or maybe even Broadway, where the city provides the material and the county provides the manpower. I think this is a good agreement, and the city attorney has also reviewed the agreement, and so it's ready for the Commissioners to approve.
I've discussed this with Bob, it's, I think it's good also.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve. Second, roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
And we have a amendment for the Nevo Road, Bridge 125 over York Ferry Creek. John, did you go over this?
I did go over that. It looks, I don't know the exact purpose of it, I think it's for additional geological work, it looks like, in the field for this particular bridge. It's not unusual in the scheduled services, Angie's approved it, so I think it's ready for approval.
It is, Angie couldn't be on the meeting, she, she has a family member that's hospitalized, so she wasn't going to be able to be on today, but I did talk to her about this. She's good to approve it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the amendment for Bridge 125 and its supplement, roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Okay, we have a supplemental agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company and Good Industries, Mr. Bookout?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners, and good morning. Brad Bookout with Delaware County Economic Development. The county attorneys have approved, or have looked at this agreement. The agreement basically allows for Norfolk and Southern and Good Industries to travel over the tracks. Norfolk, the Norfolk and Southern Agreement is pretty simple and straightforward. I'm reading now from Joe Retz, he says, this is essentially adding Good Industries' ability to the county's original agreement with Norfolk and Southern for Good to travel over the tracks. So I asked for your approval on this today so we can get Good Industries moving along.
Thank you, Brent. I so move.
Second.
Motion to approve this agreement with Norfolk Southern and Good Industries in the second, roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yeah.
Hey, next, we have a joint use maintenance agreement with Endot, Brad?
Yes, Commissioners, this is for Phase Two of the Morrison Road Tiff and Sidewalk Project that the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission is undertaking. This is basically authorizing work in the Endot right-of-way along McGaughy Road. You have signed a previous agreement for Phase One. Again, the attorneys have reviewed this, and Joe Retz has given his green light for this agreement to be approved.
Brad, what's the timeline on this project, please?
The timeline is, the Redevelopment Commission would like to issue the project for bids later this year, possibly late November, in anticipation of a springtime construction timeline for the project.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure?
Agreement, please.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agreement, and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yeah.
Next is ECIR PD Brownfield's Assessment Coalition Agreement. Brad, are you in on that, too?
Yes, I'm going to step in for Bill Walters to discuss this. Bill had another engagement that he had to attend this morning. The ECI Regional Planning District is applying for an EPA grant of $600,000 for brownfield assessment work in the county. The county has had one of these grants in the past, and we are reapplying for additional funding. The coalition partners associated with the grant application would be Delaware County, the City of Muncie, and the ECI Regional Planning District. So this basically just confirms that the county is willing to be a coalition partner on the ECI Brownfield Assessment Grant Application.
That's a good program, what's the pleasure of the Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve this agreement, and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Okay, we have no ordinances or resolutions. This is the time for department heads and elected officials. I just want to say one thing, I spoke with HR Director Pam McCammon, the flu shots for the county employees have been postponed today, it will be next Monday. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak?
Commissioner Henry John Cottino.
Yes.
Morning, Commissioners, John Cottino, Merch Management. I was looking for your guys' blessing on a couple of grant applications. We have two that are available for us for funding, they are not match grants, they're just awarded monies. The first one is for Marathon Pipeline, they have a $5,000 grant for hazmat supplies that we'd like to apply for. We're going to look for getting a couple more hazmat suits for the hazmat team. The other grant, excuse me, is a rapid grant through Ball Brothers. They're looking to help us fund a drone team, which is going to work in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department. We've got a couple of the 107 pilots that are just going to help the Sheriff's Department on crash scenes or search and rescue, whatever they have. So those are the two grants that we're looking to go after with your guys' approval.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so we have a Marathon hazmat grant and the Ball Foundation drone grant.
Yes, sir.
Does the Commissioners have any questions? What's the pleasure of the Commissioners?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve those two grant applications, and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, that's all I have.
Thank you, Don.
Does anyone else have anything on department heads or elected officials?
I have a few things.
Okay.
Kyle Johnson, Chief Information Officer. My office and EMA and the Health Department are continuing to help coordinate the weekly COVID updates that go out to the public. Those are in partnership with our local healthcare providers, Ball State, IU BMH, Open Door, and others, with assistance from the Ball Brothers and other local foundations. You might notice last week, they came out on Thursday, we've moved those to Thursday to make it easier for all these organizations to kind of get all their information together and for it to be compiled in order to go out through our social media accounts and the local media. So we're also continuing to keep the local coronavirus hub active with new info as it comes in and resources, including where people can get COVID testing at our site. We have a page with an application that helps you find the nearest COVID testing. That's available at dcema.com, and if any of our community organizations have info or resources that they would like to share, please send our way, and we will be happy to do that. Thank you.
Kyle, your office, you guys are doing a good job at that. Kyle, your office, you guys are doing a good job at that and we greatly appreciate you being our spokesperson for this whole COVID thing, we appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on down to the payment of claims of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the claims and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Riggan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, John, are you seeing any questions or comments on our pages?
There was one question about phase two of the Morrison Road Trail Project, is exactly what does that entail?
John, this is Brad Bookout, I'm happy to answer that, it's continuation of the sidewalk east through the Lindenbrook area and then turning up towards McGuyard Road near the Star Financial Bank area on McGuyard and then continuing east to Oakwood Avenue.
Okay, and you're in the land acquisition part of that, correct?
That is correct. All parcels have been acquired with the exception of Ball State University parcel that is in process right now. And that particular parcel is being donated by the university for the project. So little history on the project too is probably important. This project has been in the planning stages since the mid two thousands and a bond issue was issued in two thousand and fifteen for the project. And it has a multi-phase project to add infrastructure for utilities and pedestrian in the area to prevent accidents, of course, and vehicular and pedestrian traffic from coming in contact with each other, so.
Oh, then Commissioners.
Okay. With no other business, I would entertain a motion for recess.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to recess and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Riggan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, we're in recess.
Yeah.
Thank you.